Howdy, friends, and thank you for joining us once again for Cleveland Conversations. I'm your host, C. Seth Sumner, and this is our once-per-month video interview with your city council members. Today, we have with us Mayor Kevin Brooks, who has served as mayor of Cleveland since 2018. Thank you for being with us today, Mayor.
Honored to be here. Thanks for the invitation.
So let's jump right in it. You, before becoming mayor, served as our state representative. You served in the State House. How has your experience going from the legislature over in Nashville, coming back home to Cleveland to serve as mayor, how has that adjustment been for you?
It's a great question, Seth. Thanks very much for having me today, and it's probably the question that I get asked the most. What's the difference between Nashville and Cleveland? And it's so different. The ability to serve is the same. The ability to do good for your friends and neighbors is the same, but being mayor of Cleveland, Tennessee, a local mayor in a small town is entirely different than being a member of the 99-person State House or the 33-person Senate. It's such a vast difference. I explain it to people. The state legislature is at the 30,000-foot level. You're sort of talking about statewide budgets, statewide applications, gas tax, things like that. At the local level, you're talking about streetlights and stop signs and speed bumps and potholes, and it's everywhere you go all day long, which I love. I'm a people person, and quite frankly, being in the state legislature, as my friends who are there now can tell you, you're a little bit detached from hometown. You've got to get in your car as a part-time legislator, leave your home, leave your family, leave your job, in my case, and drive to Nashville once a week and then stay there for a few days and drive home. Cleveland, you are able to be here 24/7, serving, listening, helping any way that you can. So it's a big difference.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. I know our viewers will really enjoy hearing that. Cleveland was ranked as the number-one job recruiter in the whole state of Tennessee in 2023. It wasn't announced until 2024, so just last year.
They had to verify. They had to verify. Are you sure?
And I remember you quietly not being able to fully announce it at the time, once you had heard that, and we had to wait for the official announcement from the state. And on your podcast, Five Points with the Mayor, you recently had Doug Barry and Mike Griffin with the Chamber of Commerce on there. Tell us about your emphasis with industrial growth. How are you involved in helping this community grow and gain jobs for our citizens?
Thanks, Seth, for bringing that up because it was a huge announcement. When you serve in Nashville, like I did, and you realize Nashville, Knoxville, Memphis, Chattanooga, the Big Four, they are always ranked ahead of just about everybody else. That's where the growth and the industry and the manufacturing, that's where it goes until 2023. And I was very grateful that Cleveland and Bradley County were ranked number one, and I jokingly asked the commissioner, you know, how soon can we announce it, and was waiting for them to announce it officially at the ECD website before we really talked about it. I did get a call from our good friend, mutual friend, Doug Barry, and it was really something great to celebrate. But I can't take credit for it. It's the team, it's the city, working with the county, Mayor Davis, working with the chamber, Mike and Doug, working with the region, quite frankly. And all of that coming together, gelling together as a team, is how we were able to accomplish recruiting more industry and more manufacturing than anyone else for that 12-month period. Cleveland is very blessed. I'm not the least bit hesitant to tell that story everywhere I go. We are blessed with location. If you're in real estate, location, location, location. And we have things that people need. First of all, we have the square footage. We have the acreage still available, much of it on the I-75 corridor. We have great power source with Cleveland Utilities and partners with TVA. We have great infrastructure with TDOT and our local road system, great jet port if they want to fly in and out. So when you have all of those logistics, location, and cooperation from local governments, it really is a winning combination, and for that one brief moment, we won.
That's right. Really like to hear the emphasis on team, and it's been my experience being with the city of Cleveland and getting to work with the chamber and the county on occasion as well. I think all of our citizens have to be very proud that we have dedicated public servants working so well together to accomplish great things for this community.
And thanks, Seth, for saying that. It's true. And I think I wish people realized how well we do work together. It likes to be published or put on the internet when we're not in agreement or when someone makes a snide comment or remark, but behind the scenes, we work together so closely. We work together almost continuously. There's always some company looking, and they-- Chamber likes to make up secret code words, Project Silverfox and Project Foxtrot and all these different things. We don't ever know what it is, but we're in agreement that we hope it comes to Cleveland.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Moving inwardly and looking at our community, Build Cleveland's Future Initiative, $138 million infrastructure projects across the city.
Right.
Just incredible. We're in year two of three years of these projects. Some of these we've checked off, some of them we're still working on. Can you give us a list? Tell us a little bit about the meaningful impact that these projects are already having on citizens.
Absolutely, and it was a great opportunity. I've got to give total credit to the city council for their buy-in, for their vote. The mayor doesn't have a vote. It's the city council that votes on those initiatives. And the Build Cleveland's Future Initiative, $138 million orchestrated and put together by our city manager, Joe Fivas. It is an all-encompassing, from the north side to the south side and everywhere in between, roads, bridges, parks, greenways, truly the largest infrastructure package ever put together and voted on in the history of Cleveland. There was a few moments early on where a list of projects was slid across the table to me and said, "Okay, Mayor, which ones do you want to do first?" And I remember sliding the list back and saying, "All of it. I want to do all of it," because every part of it is needed. We need a new retrofit on Tinsley Park, which is underway. We needed to finish and repave Paul Huff, which just got done. We desperately needed to fix Highway 60 with three schools. As a father and a grandfather, dropping off at the three different schools, there was so much on that list. The Greenway that the Brooks family uses all the time with thousands of other families, the new Avery Johnson Park, the retrofit of Mosby Park, the brand-new under-construction Jim Shark Park. All of that is in the $138 million infrastructure program, all done thankfully and budgeted and balanced, and it really has, I think, made Cleveland better than when we were elected, than when we found it. And I'm so grateful to be a part of the team, so thankful. You've had so many members of the city council. Every one of those council members needs to be thanked individually because it was their vote and their support and their belief. If they did not believe and have buy-in, then none of this would have been possible. So I owe them a great deal of thanks.
Absolutely, and I think our citizens are quite thankful for that work. It was a big lift, and we can already see a lot of those projects have been completed or are beginning to impact lives.
I just went over the list yesterday with our city manager, Joe Fivas, and it's four pages long. I jokingly kept flipping, flipping through the budget.
Single-spaced.
Single-spaced, four pages long, and it truly is an amazing, amazing chapter in the city of Cleveland. We've had wonderful chapters in the past. This current Build Our Future is a wonderful chapter, and it makes me look forward to whatever's in the next chapter.
Appreciate that. You mentioned parks, and I was actually with the city manager recently, and I had asked, because we need to know these things, right? How many parks do we have in the city of Cleveland? And we had to sit there on our fingers and go through the list. I think we came up with at least 13 just on the spot, and the Civitan Inclusive Park
Correct.
has been an incredible project. Johnston Park, Refresh. What was the thoughts or the vision behind those type projects? How do they help improve our citizens' lives?
You know, there's so many things that I could talk about with the parks. You've talked about the Civitan Inclusive Park. It's the only park that's ADA, 100% ADA, handicap-accessible. And when you have a family member like we do, who is wheelchair necessity, those kinds of parks, it's the only park that she can go to and enjoy every single aspect of it. My granddaughter names every animal and speaks to them every time she goes to the Civitan Park. But Deer Park with the zipline and the new Refresh down there, Johnston Park, we are sitting in the historic branch of the library, donated originally. This house was the Sarah Johnston House, and so that family has been a huge part for generations in our city. They donated that land to the city for a park, and I'm thrilled that Brian Turner and his team and so many of the city teams came together with a refurbishment idea and over 1,100 new plantings. And in addition to the 100-year-old trees that are already there, it came together to be just one of the most wonderful downtown areas now. But when you think about the 13 or 14 parks we have, I've got to tell you, the very direct line that you can draw, to your comment a moment ago about manufacturing jobs. The last three or four major manufacturers chose Cleveland, Tennessee, because on their scoring, on their marking, they gave us great marks for quality of life. They told us your parks, your Greenway, what our employees will be doing when they're not in the manufacturing line, where they'll be sending their kids to school, how they're going to live their life. We choose Cleveland, Tennessee, because Cleveland, Tennessee has chosen quality-of-life projects.
And we love to recruit the employers who care about those things.
That's exactly right.
Let's talk about your podcast a little bit.
Sure.
We've been doing that for a few months now. Five Points with the Mayor.
Right.
Special guests. We talk quite often about who's going to be next, and I think sometimes you even get the questions, "When am I going to be?"
That's right. I've gotten it already.
How popular has the podcast been? Are you enjoying that and what's been the community outreach and engagement that you've accomplished?
Well, I absolutely love the podcast, Seth. Thanks for doing it. Not just the video that we're doing today, the YouTube, but the podcasts that are audio. I'm so thankful that the city of Cleveland is using these electronic tools and this technology to communicate. Citizens know that they can communicate to us. We all have email and text messages and Facebook Messenger and all the different ways that they can communicate to their elected officials. But sometimes governments, municipalities, don't have a great stream of information flowing out and communication flowing out to the citizens. And so it's just a wonderful way to communicate. I'm getting great feedback, not because it's me, but because of the guests that we've had and the questions and the dialogue. A few months ago, we had our top-two law enforcement. We had our chief of police for the city. We had the high sheriff of Bradley County. Now that doesn't sound like an exciting or riveting conversation. What are we going to talk about? Arrests? It was great. It turned out to be one of the longest podcast lengths because we were talking and enjoying it so much. Both of those men, both our top law enforcement officers, were engaging and enthraling in their stories. It's just wonderful. We talked with the chamber officials about how we recruit these companies and the different ways. Our vice president for recruitment is the top 50 in the nation.
That's wonderful.
Our police force, top 3% in the nation. Our firefighters, top 3% of the nation. And so to have all of these guests coming on the podcast, not only am I enjoying it, but I'm actually learning as I'm sitting there. There has not been one Five Points with the Mayor podcast that I haven't come away educated and more knowledgeable about some aspect of our city. I'm a lifelong learner. I love to learn, so I'm enjoying it immensely.
It is, and I think maybe this is a good time to plug for our viewers if you haven't checked out.
Absolutely. Five Points with the Mayor. Wherever podcasts can be found, join us. I hope you'll enjoy it.
That's right. You just mentioned Police and Fire Department being in the top 3% of the nation. We've got a lot of awards and accolades in this community. Lot of wonderful people doing a lot of work out there. What investments or policies do you think has really contributed from the city council, from the mayor's point of view, in accomplishing these incredible accolades that our staff have given?
Again, that's a very easy answer, Seth. That's a direct line right back to the budget, and I've got to give full credit to the city council. Every year, I'm very blessed as the mayor to be invited to give a state-of-the-city address, usually in multiple occasions, different civic organizations, civic clubs. And I'm always honored to do that and to talk about the good news of Cleveland. And I always begin with, we would not be in the shape we are today. We would not be able to talk about the accolades and the good things happening if the city council had not gotten our financial house in order. You mentioned at the beginning of the show, the vice mayor and I were elected in 2018. 2019, we were kind of rolling along, our very first budget, our very first season of getting into the budget process, and then 2020, COVID, everything shuts down. And so we, I'm very grateful, the city of Cleveland, took that opportunity to really get our finances in order. We had taken a look at the borrowing of Cleveland. We had taken a look at the debt of Cleveland, and although that's not a sexy podcast kind of a topic to talk about city debt, I'm grateful that we took the deep dive into how do we get our finances fixed. Unbelievably, there was a time in Cleveland where we had a very large amount, almost 65% of our debt was variable. Now, for people that have a credit card or understand what variable interest means, if the stock market, if the financial markets went up and down, so did our debt, and we didn't even know how to budget. We didn't even know what our payments were going to be. We totally reversed that. We're now 95% fixed. Actually, it's higher than that. Now it's 97. We've got about 3% that's variable, according to the city manager, which means we now know exactly what our debt structure and repayment process can be, not just for today, but literally 2030, 2035, and beyond into the next generation. And we now know this is what we can spend. This is our limit, and the city council had 100% responsibility for that. They were the ones that said, "This is not going to be easy. We're going to cut back, tighten our belts." Everybody talks about DOGE right now, Departments of Government Efficiency. We were DOGE before it was cool. I saw just this week, our 2024 budget, annual budget for the city, was higher than what we're about to introduce as our 2026. So we are spending less and doing more. So I'm very thankful, the city council. I give great credit to the vice mayor, who is an accountant by trade. Ken Webb is just a smart guy and keeps us on the straight and narrow, and I'm very grateful that they all support balanced budgets and conservative spending.
Absolutely. I think that's something citizens really appreciate, especially living in this part of the world.
I think that's what they expect. After all, it's their money.
Fiscal responsibility.
That's right.
Yes, sir. Infrastructure projects. Do you have a top-most impactful infrastructure project that the city has either started or accomplished recently?
Can I have two? Is that okay?
Oh, of course. You're the mayor.
Well, part-time, part-time mayor. I can say that I think the two most important infrastructure projects right now is the construction and completion of Highway 60, without a doubt, just unbelievably important to get those four lanes open. There right now, a portion of them have been open as of this week. And then the second, which is a parallel street that connects, is Paul Huff Parkway, and having that repaved and resurfaced, and the intersections along Paul Huff, you may have seen, Mouse Creek has been done, Peerless has been done, we're going to start working on Atkinson, and all these other major intersections that cross Paul Huff. I think because of the way our city has grown to the north, those are the, I say, dual, top-two projects. And then I'm going to slide in a third. We've got to get the south side, the Tom Roland Interchange, and that part of our infrastructure really up and running. It was built. It was constructed. We need to finish that project and get the south side as bustling and profitable as the north side is.
So we've talked, as part of that, about this east-west connector through the south part of town. What are some of the challenges that the community faces with a project of that large of scale? $30-plus million in grant funds that we have been awarded, but there's other needs there.
Right.
And I know the council has put that as one of the top priorities. So what are some of the challenges that we're facing?
You know, the challenge, I think, right now, and we've talked about it, Seth, during the podcast with Five Points with the Mayor, you know, the cost of fire trucks has gone up exponentially. The cost of ambulances has gone up exponentially. Well, guess what? The cost of road building and bridges and roads and infrastructure and sidewalks, and we want part of the Greenway to go downtown, connect up through Starbucks and under Inman Street, every part of that, asphalt, concrete, gravel, every part of it has gone up just tremendously. No tariffs needed. This is all local gravel from a local quarry, but for some reason, the costs go up exponentially, year after year, year over years, the way I should say it. And so a road or a bridge that would have cost $10 million a few years ago is going to cost $20 million. New schools. A new school that was built a few years ago was $15 million. That same school is $30 million. So everything we do as a city, the rising costs of construction, furnishings, and everything inside that project is really the biggest challenge we've got to overcome. We will plan it, and we will budget for it, and by the time we can either begin construction or complete construction, the cost has doubled and sometimes even more than that.
It is a challenge, and it's something that I think we all feel right now, is just an elevation in prices.
That's right.
It's no different between my household and the local government.
That's right.
I think we've talked about parks. We've talked about infrastructure. I want to talk about something that the city council has done, and you particularly have got to help out in two different roles here, is the land bank authority.
That's true.
It was, we are one of four, only four municipalities in the entire state of Tennessee that has been granted this authority by the state legislature, and it is now getting off the ground to help recover and renovate derelict properties across the community. So tell us about your experience with this rather unique tool that the city has.
It's a great tool, and I'm glad you asked about it. It was one of the last, I think, if you look in the code book, the TCA, the green books that we have on the bookshelf, I think if you look in the TCA 2018, the Acts of 2018, it was one of my final things that I shepherded through the legislature. Got to pass the House, got to pass the Senate, got to be signed by the governor. So there's all these different steps you've got to take. But it was to add Cleveland, Tennessee to the very short, small list of cities that legally, by state statute, can have a land bank. A lot of people don't know what they are, know how they work, and so because it is relatively obscure and unknown, people stay away from it. It's an incredibly useful tool for a city or a municipality, as those who have already been awarded the right. And now we are finding out to go in and bring back to the tax rolls old abandoned homes, old abandoned lots that a home could be built on. So what you're doing is you're using this tool, which is a very legal tool in the Tennessee toolbox, for a municipality to put something back on the tax rolls. We all know that we need affordable housing. So for us to take a derelict, abandoned home that it's been gone for so long that the family's no longer around, there was an abandoned church downtown that no one on the board, when it was active, is still alive. They had all deceased. So when those record searches were made and those deed searches are done at the courthouse, it's been off the rolls and off activity so long, everyone had expired. And so the city can go in, we can do a couple of things. We can flip it and turn it and sell it. We can donate it, which we've done a couple of times, to City Fields and other organizations like that, Habitat for Humanity. Or we can take the land and turn that into somewhere where Habitat for Humanity or someone could build homes, build affordable housing. I think the future is so bright with that opportunity of a land bank. It seems to be going very well, exactly the way we had predicted.
As we look ahead, 2025, 2026, '27, and on, what are the things that you look forward most to for the city of Cleveland?
Well, you know, I feel like 2026 is already here in some aspects, and so I'm thinking 2030, 2035, long after I am able to turn this over to somebody else, and I can go play golf or go fishing with my grandkids. But it's, I really look at downtown, I think, for the most part, first. I look at a revitalized, completely revitalized downtown. We've had such great comments from the Inman Street restructuring. Yes, it was difficult, and yes, it was inconvenient for seven or eight months, maybe nine. And I apologize. I apologize for that for months and months and months, more than a year. But I can tell you, looking forward into the revitalized downtown, bringing new life, bringing new restaurants, bringing new hotels and nightlife to downtown, I think that's going to be the greatest thing that I can look back on. And the things that needed to be done, when you buy a home, Seth, you and your family, there's just upkeep that you've got to do. You've got to clean out the gutters, and you've got to paint the shutters, and you've got, there's just things you've got to do. And we needed to do that for a long time. We needed to fix Mouse Creek and that intersection. We needed to fix Peerless, all of those arteries dumping into Paul Huff. Number-one comment that I get around town is the busyness of Paul Huff. I live there too. I see it too.
That's right.
So grateful that the city council voted very early on to redo the Paul Huff corridor and make it into a more efficient, upgrade the lights to where they're now computerized and they can see traffic and make sure that things are going well and smoothly. Downtown revitalization, north side improvement, I really think that going forward, whoever's in this job after me is going to have a great time.
And I think the city council sees that as well, and
I'm positive they do.
and all of our downtown partners across the community as well. I think that's a good vision.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with our viewers?
I'm just so thankful. I'm just so thankful to get the opportunity to serve. I served, as you said, for 12 years in Nashville and now serving for seven as the mayor. And the ability to help your friends and neighbors, there's something about public service and what it gives and feeds into your spirit. This is the city with spirit, and we hear that and we talk about that often. But what feeds my spirit and what makes me get up in the morning and want to put on this sport coat that matches yours, nice coat, by the way.
Twinning, as we say at my house.
We like to thank Larry McDaniel, the town squire, for the jackets. But the thing that makes me go is the ability to help my friends and neighbors. But the thing that makes me go is the ability to help my friends and neighbors, to hear that phone call of appreciation, to get a text or an email from a widow who didn't know what else to do and her utilities weren't working, to, to get the, the comment on social media thanking us for safety on the Greenway and the new license plate readers that are, that are tracking criminals that are entering into Cleveland. And, and we're just so, we have so much to be thankful for. And, and that's what I would say. I would, I would, I would say thank you to the friends and neighbors in Cleveland, Tennessee that allow me the honor of serving as the mayor. And, and I get the opportunity to spend the afternoon with Seth Summer.
Well, it's certainly been a privilege to be with you today on the podcast and on video now.
That's right. We had a double day, double doozy.
So thank you very much for being with us, Mayor Brooks.
Thank you, sir.
Friends, I hope you've enjoyed this episode of Cleveland Conversations. We'll be back with you next month with another interview to help you learn more about your city staff and your elected representatives. Until then, I hope you stay safe. I hope you have fun in this wonderful city and may God bless Cleveland.